Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit, which is to your left in this room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. Tonight, the meeting is recorded by the secretary, but she is absent, so I'm asking everyone on the board to please speak directly into their microphone clearly, so that the record can be made from the television recording. It will then subsequently be recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record and minutes, so please identify yourself. I don't believe that that's necessarily ultimately. Each time you cover the podium and speak into the microphone. We don't technically have anything on our agenda tonight, so most of the rest of this information is, well, we have obviously our one item on our agenda, but it's not of public input. It's not a public hearing.
The agenda says it is. Does it have public input?
Is there an agenda?
It's not for public input.
All right. Well, I'm going to read this regardless. There is no public input as far as we're aware tonight. I will read it, then it'll be superfluous information for everyone's enjoyment. "The Board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda, extra copies of which are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and or their representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If this case is a public hearing," which it isn't, "it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the Board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves, along with their address, and direct any questions to the Board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input, which there will be none. Once all input, public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed, which will not be opened, so it is not then closed. To public input, the Board will then be moved to a decision. And no further input will be allowed at any point."
Peter, before you go any further, the folders that were on the table when I arrived contain some information that I have not had an opportunity to look at.
Okay.
Might I request that we, as a board, take 10 or 15 minutes and review, take notes, and get ready?
I think you will, let's, I would like Dan to make a brief introduction, then Ed to make a brief introduction, and then I think then we'll have you any time to read. Obviously, we'll allow you some time to read.
Read during my introduction.
I can't, because you are, you are really, you know, you're the wisdom of the board.
Thank you.
Tonight, I'm just going to start this a bit. This is more of a workshop for us than it is a public hearing. We have a draft of a resolution, which we've been wordsmithing over the course of the last month or six weeks. I think it's still due for more editing and wordsmithing and discussion, which we will be having tonight. I'd like Dan to just give us a brief update of where we are, followed by Ed Primo, which will give us a more detailed discussion on the resolution that's before us. And at that, I will let Dan speak.
Thank you all for coming tonight, first of all. This is what really pulls together trying to do something comprehensively, having this kind of participation. I think you'll all recall, and the board especially, back on June 21st, the town board made a referral to this board, the planning board. In that referral, they basically distilled down their requests to this board to two components. Before the town board was a request to rezone a parcel of land on Titus Avenue from R1 to R7. That required a C-Cor review. The town board felt that the planning board was better advised to undertake that process, because that is a subject that this board visits frequently. They asked if this board would be willing to be the lead agency for the purpose of that C-Cor evaluation. My recollection is that sometimes subsequent to that, the board undertook that job. All of the information, all of the meetings, everything that has been forthcoming has been, at least in part, due to that application by the town board, that you acted as lead agency for the rezoning of the parcel of land. Now, I'll remind you again that the rezoning of the parcel of land was based on an applicant's request to the town board, based upon a concept that they had submitted to the town board. I think that's important as you proceed through. The second thing that the town board asked was that you review the zoning law in the town with regard to how senior housing is treated throughout the town, without regard to the specific, site-specific rezoning that was being requested. And if you had any recommendation, or if you had any specific items that you wished the town board to visit, that you include that in your referral. Now, my recollection is that on December 19th, 2011, maybe '12, you had a public hearing in this matter, and it went on for the lion's share of the evening. And at some point in time, the public hearing was closed, and the board undertook its discussion with regard to those two components. It sounds simpler than it is, simply to break it down to two components, because there really was an extraordinary amount of information that was submitted by both the public and by the applicants, and then by it amongst yourselves. A decision was made sometime thereafter. You'll recall there were some areas that you were more concerned with in terms of the information you had available, and you undertook the services of some experts to prepare reports for you. Traffic is one that comes to mind immediately. Even though the public hearing was closed, and you were in the process of entertaining the submission of some further information, I made the decision, based upon public meeting law, that information regarding this project was not closed, and that you would be taking information. We would open it up until the time that you made a decision, if you made a decision, of referral. So I think that's kind of what Mr. Palermo's talking about tonight. We're not closing out the submission of information to the board at any point in time, so that this is as comprehensive a decision, hopefully, as it can be. Two other points, I think, I'd like to make, and they're just, they're really secondary, but I'll ask Mr. Primo, who's in the audience, to speak and see if there's anything I may have missed, but there might have been some misunderstanding, and I don't think that that's fair to the board, the town, or even the public. When it appeared that the board was close, we had worked out some proposed, a proposed document that reflected what seemed to be the mood of a majority of the board. You have to start somewhere, and that was what I put together, so the board could begin discussing where they wanted to end up and how they wanted to end up. I asked if Mr. Primo would care to join the board for the final stages, because I am the deputy town attorney who represents the planning board, and have represented this board throughout this proceeding and the process. If it should happen that the matter goes back to the town board, Mr. Primo, as a representative of Harder Seacrest, is the town attorney. And it just made sense to me that rather than rely upon documentation that goes back and forth, that have it firsthand. Have when he advises the town board regarding what it is that occurred at the planning board stage, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, that that message be translated directly to the town board. So contrary to some opinion, second counsel wasn't undertaken. We are both representatives, or we both represent the town of Aranda Coit, and advise different boards in different functions, but in this case, it will obviously be regarding the same set of material, and I wanted to make sure that it was done properly. Lastly, one document, and I tried to read everything that is submitted to the board as well. One document was submitted, and much of the material in that document was extraordinarily worthwhile, and nothing doesn't, or nothing is overlooked, but there was a suggestion in the document that there was somehow some inappropriate, it was a document that was forwarded by the applicants, and that there was some errors in that document, and that they were somehow intentional, and that that would then slip into an intentional omission on a public document, into the filing of a false statement. And I just want to say at the outset tonight, in addition to the absolute joy of representing this board on these topics, in my career path, I've worked as an assistant district attorney, and my analysis of the material here shows absolutely zero criminal intent, and there is no question but that this was nothing more than an error, if there's even that on that document, and this was a good faith application on the part of the applicants. So with that, I will ask Mr. Primo to follow up on that which I've left out.
Thank you, Dan. My name is Ed Primo. I'm with the firm of Harder Seacrest in Emery. As Dan's mentioned, I've been trying to, working with this board to try to put together a resolution with respect to the feeling of the board and the way that the board would want to go forward. Let me be clear, though, to follow up on something Dan said. The document that we're working on is the planning board document. It's ultimately up to you to have it read the way you want it to read. I'm here to help you with that. I'm here to explain some suggestions and wording that I've put in here, but ultimately, it's your document. And I think that will become relevant, because I know from some emails that have been exchanged, it might even be differences among the board about exactly what this should say. And you know, that's one of the reasons why we're here to work it out. The document was gone over, the draft resolution, the last workshop. Basically, what I've done is taken my notes from the lackless workshop, tried to make some changes based upon those notes, and what I felt was the feeling of a majority of the board, not necessarily all the board. And since that time, I think there's been two drafts shared with the board. I know we received some email comments from Jay. Some of those changes have been incorporated with some explanation as to my thoughts about those, and I think there's even been exchanges as of today about what this should say. Going back over the document, basically, it goes through the history of the application process. On the second page, in the whereas, it talks about the town board reference to this board, both with respect to the site-specific review for legacy, the seeker review with respect to that, but then also the issue of looking at the zoning ordinance in general with respect to senior housing. It goes through the seeker process that's been conducted by this board. When we get to the third page, we start having some of the changes based upon the last board's discussion. Once again, the first conclusion remains that the planning board does not have sufficient information to make a secret determination with respect to the legacy project, and that you believe you'll have to receive additional information that would be typically provided in something similar to site plan review. Now, at the last session, there was some comments from the board, based upon an earlier draft, that some of you felt that perhaps you should identify the issues that you have been looking at, and potentially, those issues you think, based upon what you have seen so far, there won't be significant issues. And those are discussed in number two. Once again, it's more of a sense of the board. You say that as the project changes, you would have to confirm these things, but we list 10 areas in there where the board, at this point, doesn't see real concerns. Those areas include changes to air quality, adverse change in traffic level, solid waste production, a removal or destruction of vegetation, fauna, or wildlife habitats, impairment of a critical environmental area, creation of a material conflict with the town's current plan, change of either quantity or type of use of energy, creation of a hazard to human health, substantial change to agricultural open space or recreational resources, or change resulting in encouraging a large group of people to come to the area. Once again, this is based upon what I thought the board had wanted to do. This list would be something for you to review. Perhaps there's things you want to take out, perhaps there's things you want to add to that section, but this is basically saying, based upon this information now in our review, we don't think these are the big issues we will be focusing on. Section three, though, goes through and says more detail about the problems that you do think you have and the lack of sufficient information. In particular, it suggests that the density project may have an adverse impact on the character and quality of the neighborhood, and that you feel you do not have sufficient information on that subject, and that you would like to have further. In item number four, you also identify other concerns, and this was based upon my notes of the planning board discussion at the workshop, and those are also concerns with drainage, noise impacts on existing neighborhood, and visual impacts of the project. Once again, you may want to take something out of that list, you may want to add something in. That was based upon the discussion, as I recall it, and I've given it to you. It then goes on to have some more discussions. It gives the planning board sense that there may need to be changes in the density of the project, but the ultimate conclusion, which is reinforced, is that you feel you need further information, similar to that you'd get in a site plan approval. You then go into the next part of the discussion in paragraph eight. It talks about that you have looked at the R7 zoning ordinance. It talks about the La Bella associate report that had been given to this board, and I believe a consultant had come in and talked to you about that. I think it was suggested that when we do the final resolution, we should attach a copy of that, and the resolution references that. Item nine contains suggestions with respect to amendments you'd like the town board to consider. Those are set forth in number nine. The most significant ones among those being the issue dealing with that a rezoning application should contain the same information as for a site plan review application, a suggestion that the net, the minimum net buildable area requirement should be decreased or eliminated. And then also in E is a discussion about the site capacity worksheet. The language that suggests in there now, I think reflects at least comments I'd received from Jay. I think there may be other changes other members want. I think there's been some suggestion that maybe the worksheet should be eliminated. So that's something for the planning board to discuss, if you want to go forward with that. And then there's further discussion about the rationale and issues with the R7 zoning. In paragraph 10, we've rewritten the language, I think, hopefully to better reflect what the planning board feels. This says, "The planning board requests that the town board act to amend the R7 zoning ordinance." I think the prior draft had said expeditiously, and we've taken out the word expeditiously. "The planning board makes this request independent of its review of the legacy project. While the issues raised above rose from a review of the legacy project, the planning board believes that the town board should amend the R7 zoning ordinance whether or not the legacy project proceeds. The planning board notes, however, that an amended R7 zoning ordinance would assist the planning board in its review of the legacy projects and other projects, and promote the purposes of the R7 district. The legacy project remains subject to a secret review by the planning board. Nothing about the town board's consideration of changes to R7 zoning ordinance will result in a secret review of legacy project that is less protective of the environment." I know there was some issue with that last sentence, whether that should be taken out. I remain, my suggestion is that we leave it in, because I think it talks about how this board is viewing it, but once again, that's your decision. Just a bit of discussion, if we get this passed and it goes to, is sent up to the town board, of course, the town board's the town board. The town board could decide to take up your suggestion, to consider changes to the R7 zoning ordinance, they could decide not to. They could decide, you know, that they want to do a broader review of the zoning ordinance. You know, it would be up to them. But they've asked you for your suggestions, and in essence, these are suggestions coming back to them. So I'd be happy to take any questions. Yes?
I have an observation, and you just made a point, and I think it's very, very important for everyone in the room, on the side of the desk or that, to bear in mind. The town board made a request. The planning board, review some information, and get back to them with what that review resulted in. There is no finality in the decision made here with regard to that review. As I just said, the decision to rezone, the decision to reconsider zoning laws in the town of Aranda Coit is totally and completely incumbent upon the legislative body of the town, which is the town board. So it's very important to note, this is a beginning process, if you will, that the town board undertook by requesting us to look at these things, but there's no finality in the decision made here tonight.
Any other questions from the board? Jay? Questions?
Yeah, the, with, the last sentence in this, in this thing, I, I, we're going to talk about this after this, right?
Yep.
Are you talking, are you talking 11?
No, chapter, or under number 10.
Okay. The last sentence in 10. All right.
I'm thinking that we should have just general questions, not, I don't think, technical questions.
Yeah. Okay. I don't have any general questions about what you just reviewed. Rich?
I don't have any general questions at this point, but I do appreciate Mr. Primo's advice on this matter, and he was very helpful, not only in preparing for tonight, but also at the workshop two weeks ago.
Ray?
Mr. Primo, thank you, but I have no general questions at this juncture.
Michael?
Thanks for incorporating our stuff. The particulars I, we'll address later with you. I'm just talking nuts and bolts and dotting the Is, crossing the Ts.
No general questions.
Okay. Well, thank you. Larry, did you have anything that you would like to add at this point, before we start discussing?
No.
Also, I forgot to mention that the first case, PB 1211-2, is asked to be tabled until February, so that matter is not before us tonight. Do we have to vote on tabling it, or? No, they've withdrawn their application until future consideration.
So it's not tabled, then?
I don't know if-
Because tabled means it has to come up next.
No.
So it's just withdrawn.
Yeah.
Now, can I read?
Take a couple of minutes to read.
I just have one question. Is Mr. Primo going to remain if we have more questions of him?
Sure.
Okay.
I can't make him, but I presume he will.
Now, we still have, this is one concept.
I'm sorry?
This is one concept.
Yep.
There's still a streamlined version.
Considering.
Considering.
Why don't we take a break?
Do I need to table?
No.
Just tell them we're going to take a 10-minute break. We're just going to take a 10-minute break.
10-minute break.
We'll reconvene at 7:35.
When we come back, could you ask Larry if he would?
... parcel to the amendments to the R7 zoning. I don't think that that's an issue that the planning board can successfully vet and resolve. I think that there's more engineering studies that need to be done, there's some work that needs to be done outside of this board. I think the only things that we can suggest, or I would suggest that we state are that through the course of our investigation, there may or may not be an error in the calculation or the, or the, um, a typographical error, if you will, to the form. And it should also be considered and discussed beyond us as to whether that site capacity worksheet is appropriate for the R7 zoning at all. Um, I still think that, I feel strongly that, um, five acre lot size is something that should be decreased, or lot size in and of itself should be eliminated. I think that, um, that lot size is onerous and restrictive to development. I think that there are a lot more modern concepts to senior housing that we're precluding by having such a large lot size. There's cluster housing, there's pod type housing, there's smaller assisted living products that are out there, things that are way different than what we're doing here currently that are doing in parts of other parts of the country, in other parts of the world, and we are limiting ourselves to these large, very large expansive projects that we're, you know, everyone is very concerned about here. To that end, um, I guess I would like to open it up to board comment and discussion. I'm not quite sure how the methodology to going through this, I, you know, I don't know that we go through this line by, I guess we can go through this line by line. I don't know if we want to have a general discussion about what I've just said before we get into specific discussions, um, but I think that may be appropriate.
Yeah.
So maybe Bernie could just give us your two cents on what I just discussed and see if you have any additions or caveats that you'd like to make us aware of.
No, I'm fine with where we're heading with that. Our goal though is tonight to redo this document. Is that the goal?
I, I think that might be an optimistic goal. I don't know that we can have a completely, um, what do you think? I mean, is that possible? I mean, that we can have something that's completely edited, wordsmithed and completely, I mean, that we can-
You're absolutely on no time constraint. Ironically, I think at the last workshop, one group of people were incensed that it had taken so long and another group felt that that word, uh, expeduct should be, should be removed. So I, I just don't think you have any time constraint. You're certainly not going to walk out of here with a document that is in the finished form that the one you're working on is in. So my suggestion is that you work, and remember every time I speak, I'm not taking a position. I want to make sure that's very important. But, um, why don't you, why don't you talk through, my recommendation would be to talk through the document, see where those areas of agreement are, where those areas of change need be. And Mr. Primo put it together, so maybe he has an ability to, to bring that about on a more expedited basis.
Unfortunately, particularly since I'm not very good at, at keyboarding myself, I don't, I don't have the document here to, to modify. Um, what, what I would suggest is, is I, I will again take notes and very similar way I did before, try to get out another version so that you could look at it at-
So I got a question. Yeah, I got a question on that. So we do a lot of approvals without such a formal document. So why can't we talk through what we agree and pass the resolution or deny the resolution based on that?
Yeah. And another, another option would be to, to kind of generally tell me what the changes are. Sometimes I've seen a situation where you then work with the town staff and, and the chair to have the chair review it and say, yes, that's, that's what we-
Is the concern, we want something that the town board's going to fully understand? That's why we don't want to do it our, our normal way and we want such a formal document?
Yeah, I, I think the, the issue has been the, the frankly, complexity and controversy. And getting back to, to the town board, um, you know, I, I think to the extent that we make it, um, clear, it will be better. But I'm, I'm happy to do it, but I mean, it may be just the best if I take down notes of, of where you are and I'll review them at the end and then circulate another version.
Yeah, so procedurally though, what, when we walk out of here, does it have to go-
I think everyone probably wants to have a chance to review the final document and maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but I mean, I mean, we could discuss the concepts and then it could be worked out among staff and myself, but I think everyone, we owe it, I owe it to everyone. I mean, Ray, what do you think, Rich?
Can I suggest that we work through it and find out how many changes we want to make?
Good idea.
And then after that, we can decide what the best approach would be.
Let's go baby steps.
If we don't finish it tonight, does that mean this has to go another month?
Which is fine.
Okay.
So you're going to start at number one?
Well, no, let's go around the table about the concept a little bit and then we'll move on. Michael?
Excuse me, gentlemen. I don't want to keep interrupting your meeting with this cop. Am I correct in understanding that you are not making a final decision tonight?
We don't, we don't know that.
So it may be public input.
No, there's no public input. That's been closed.
We're not making a decision tonight whether or not to rezone that part, the parcel, the town board-
Recommendation to the town board.
There'd be no more-
Not even making a recommendation per se, we're, we're, we're making a secret determination as we've been asked to do. But if we, go ahead, I'm sorry. I mean, no, we've been asked to make a secret determination in the review of the zoning ordinance. We're not making necessarily a positive recommendation. I mean, obviously if we make a negative declaration to seeker, that's somewhat positive in nature even though it sounds contrarian.
Yeah, I mean, well, and I, and I guess I'll hear the comments. I mean, I, I know you started off saying that you believe you had sufficient information to review the concept.
Right.
Um, I think if we wanted, if, if you're saying, okay, now I can make a negative or positive declaration, that's a, that's a document we'd want to make sure we worked on.
Right.
And had very detailed, um, either, either way. Um, I, I think what you're, what I heard you kind of saying is, I think I have enough information, now we need to-
Right.
-review it and I guess that's what's up for discussion.
So in other words, the public has no more input before you make a recommendation to the town board?
There's no more public hearing before, on this issue, no.
There's still public hearing before the town board when this issue becomes before the town board.
Okay, we'll be there.
I understand your rationale to omit a couple of things. I'd, um, as, as a thought, I'd, I'd like very much to have the opportunity to come back here again, uh, in a workshop form like we are tonight. Um, I would like at that time, Ed, to, to not only have the document here, uh, I'd like, I'd like the opportunity to have a PowerPoint presentation of that so the folks who are here representing their interests can see what, where, where we're coming from and what we have written rather than them, we're saying, well, we don't, you know-
And, and maybe what we could do is, is I could set it up with a PowerPoint, we could actually put the text up on the screen and, and frankly, at that point, we could probably edit it.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying so that although they may not have a voice, let them at least have a, the eyesight of what's going on. Here we're talking about item six and item seven and item 10 and they haven't got a clue. In all fairness and openness-
We could do that, maybe we can make sure somebody who's a little bit better of a typist than I am is-
So your suggestion is that we do some sort of a PowerPoint type, uh, editing process at the, at the next workshop and then at the following board meeting, we could then vote one way or the other depending upon how the workshop turned out on a, on a product.
If that's feasible, I mean, it's just a thought. No, I, I certainly think that's feasible. I could, I could coordinate with Larry, I know.
Yeah.
If we need to bring a, a projector and a laptop from my office, we could do that too.
You couldn't coordinate that with me, I'll have you know.
Oh, okay.
As much as I would like finality today, I don't see how we could possibly have it. I think that it's right to the board and the public that they get a look at the draft and we, I think we need to discuss the concepts. I think the concepts are good, I think you're good at grasping the concepts which we're talking about and then creating the language that articulates what we're trying to say.
Why don't we keep on going with that?
Right.
Let me, I haven't, I haven't finished then.
All right.
My, my thoughts are, and I've, I've been able to share this and, and receive feedback from other members is that, um, I, I think the thought of R7 is something that we, we should make one of our primary thrusts. Um, the feasibility of it as it's written today and then the feasibility of how we perceive it should be written. And that, that to me is, is one of our primary goals. And the second goal is whether or not some other aspects of, of quote, the legacy, um, are even germane to the topic tonight.
Would you, um, one thought and maybe just see if the board likes to do that would be of course to kind of take what I've done and reverse the order and put the discussion of R7 first.
That would work for me.
Just kind of sense of the board if, if you'd like it modified that way?
I think during, Mr. Primo, I think during the discussion is we're addressing specific points, et cetera, whether we go forward, backwards, or from the middle out, um, I think we can take notes and come to some sort of conclusion as to where we are. I don't, I don't necessarily think it matters which way we start.
Well, I, I do, Ray.
Point, way.
Well, first of all, we've sat here and, and, and we, we, we felt that the R7 doesn't work. So why the hell are we talking about whether or not the legacy fits into it as it is? Let's, let's take R7 and make it whether it is or is not a sensible issue and make it a workable issue. And then not just legacy, but any project comes before us that is looking for R7, we already have the pattern that is feasible for the town of Aroniquoid in that R7 zoning.
I'm not in disagreement with you, Mike, but the premise-
Then why are you arguing with me?
I'm not arguing with you. And, and I may be mistaken, but I think part of the reason we've viewed it in the order that we viewed it is that's what we were given by the town board in that order. But Mike, I, I fully agree with you that the, the issue of R7 and its feasibility is, you know, paramount to what we decide here.
You're both talking about not the issue, the feasibility of R7, but the feasibility of the process.
Yeah.
The code has set up right now for us to go through an R7, uh, application.
Absolutely, Jay. Yeah, that's, yeah, you, yes, you have a good handle on this.
Thank you. I'll make sure we, we got the same, we're talking about the same thing.
I think we are.
Mr. Chairman, I have a document up in front of me and if you want Mr. Primo to update it as we go-
Somebody send us Morse code.
I can, um, I can, I can move to a different chair. I can move over to there and you can, you can do the, do you want to do the, you want to be the voice activated typist or? I'll, I'll, I guess I could give it a try. As I said, I'm not, I'm not the world's best typist. I, it might, it might be, it might just be easier if I take notes and then let's-
I think it's going to be easier to take notes and try to capture that.
Especially if we're going to change the order of things, that's all right.
I think that's too much.
Okay. Well, maybe just going on that point or do we not have a decision to, to, in general, does the board like the idea of perhaps changing the order of the discussion?
Anyone else, we want to take a vote, changing?
It's fine with me.
No, it's fine either way, really, it doesn't, anybody want to go?
Fine with me. Okay. I'll be in the next draft.
To that light though, let's go through the document and the order that it's in rather than trying to reverse the order at this point.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Does everyone agree that we do have sufficient information to review the concept of rezoning?
Yes.
So Ed, if you could take and rewrite that first paragraph to reflect that idea? Okay. And I think then number two, we do have enough information to review the concepts and I agree that we need to then re-review any subsequent application that would come before us at the site plan level for site-specific seeker. And I don't know if that's captured in this paragraph or anywhere else, but, um-
Well, just, maybe just to make sure if I understand it, if the, the, kind of the issue of what you're doing here with respect to the site-specific project is you, you're, you've been asked to do two things. One is to, um, make a recommendation to, to the town board on the rezoning. But part of that process is also as, as one of those involved agencies, you've become the lead agency, so you need to make a secret determination on, on the project. The issue is, does the planning board feel at this point that you have sufficient information to make a secret determination on, on the project as, as, as it will be, um, built? Or do you think you need additional information?
Does anyone have a cell phone that's out on the desk? If they could move it away from their microphone? Nope. All right, thank you. Sorry, that's very distracting, it's, you know. Who's wearing it? David's Larry's, most of my years. Radioactive?
It's not mine, I still don't own a cell phone.
Good for you.
Good job, John Wayne.
Still drive a Packard?
I'd like to.
And, and the point, Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to make is, is, um, is your, the idea is, is that there, there's supposed to be one seeker review of the project. So in essence, you know, you're doing your seeker review both for your recommendation of rezoning, but also for the ultimate site plan approval and for all those other agencies that will be coming along. And, and the issue is, do, do you have the information now to, to go forward and do this? Do you need to think about that some more?
I was thinking that we could separate the two issues and that seeker for the rezoning is strictly for the concept of rezoning and that we need to then perform a site-specific seeker when and if an application comes before us.
Yeah, and, and we, we could maybe do some more of this at the workshop, the, the, that, that raises an issue that would be an issue of segmentation. Um, and there, there's a specific case called Kirk Astor about that. Um, I mean, I think the, the, really there's, there's going to be, is you, when you're the lead agency, you're putting together that environmental record for everybody, including for yourself as you, as you do your, your later approvals. So that, that's an issue. You, I, I don't think you can say, um, under seeker, gee, I have enough information to rezone the site, but I don't have enough information to consider the, the impacts of this specific project. You're in essence going to have to do those together.
So we still would maintain a list of our concerns that would then subsequently have to be addressed in a site plan?
Um, no, well, in fact, what, what, the, the way this draft is set up, what you're doing is you're saying, you know, to, to complete our seeker review, we really need that sort of site plan information. Um, and, and, and that's what you're, you're basically saying.
So we're going to defer seeker determination until at such time that we have rezoning in a site plan?
Well, you, you're, what you're doing here is, is you're doing two things in this one. Let's put together the site-specific issues first. So what you're saying is, we need more information similar to a site plan application so we can make a seeker determination. Once we make that, we can make a recommendation for, for rezoning and then, for example, if the town board rezones and it comes back to you for site plan, you do the site plan, but you don't have to do seeker again because you already done seeker.
Isn't there, isn't there a generic list right in seeker that says, these are the items that need to come?
I mean, yeah, we've already done that with the law enforcement.
There's about, there's approximately 20 items.
So, so, so that in itself is the document that says what we need to follow. When we do site-specific, we're saying, did we, did we follow the 20 issues and where do we just have disagreement?
You did the 20, you, you went through those issues. That's actually how you underwent your evaluation.
And that's why I don't need that upfront. I don't need that to, to talk about a generic changing of R7. I want to, I want to do-
Well, let's, let's, and I just want to make sure we, we, we break apart the two issues because the way this has come up, you, you actually have sort of two, two zoning issues you're dealing with as far as zoning goes. You, you have a text amendment, which means you're talking about, are we going to change the, are we going to suggest to the town board that they change the word of the R7 zoning? And when they make that text amendment, it's a townwide change. It's, it's townwide.
That's the way we think of it.
That's the way you think of it. That's different than another zoning decision, which is a separate zoning decision, which is do you rezone this site for R7, for the legacy project? Okay? I mean, you, you could do, you could do one and not the other, for example.
In other words, Mr. Primo, we could actually make recommendations to change the code, but not be necessarily in favor of rezoning this particular site.
Absolutely. So I think, and in fact, what you're, the, the way this was drafted, what you're saying is, we're suggesting that you change the code, we can't decide on this particular site at this point.
And that's where I want to go. I, I want to do that in that order.
Mike, let me, let me share something with you. I think because we've been asked to give a recommendation, in a business setting, we identify what our parameters are today, how we address specific issues, and then we look at it and we say, can we do it better? Can we save more money? Can we be more productive, et cetera? So to be able to make recommendations, I still believe we have to look at it, where are we today? Where would we like to see it be in the future? I think that's the simplest way to go about that, or about this process. Because that gives us a clear delineation is, okay, this is where it is, this is where it could be, and we also have taken into account, this could be any parcel within the entire community. And it's just a recommendation.
What, what about the idea, I mean, that, I mean, in essence, this is part of what I've been saying all along, we're kind of getting bogged down in the legacy project. In reality, we're asked to rezone a parcel to R7.
Or you're, you're asked to make a recommendation.
Right. Make a recommendation on this and then perform seeker on that. And then if the zoning ordinance is changed and the parcel is rezoned, then we get an application for a project which we then need to perform seeker on.
Well, and, and I guess that's, that's, that's in essence where, where, where I want to say, you, you're doing the seeker upfront for the legacy project so that when you're done with your seeker and let's assume the town board rezones, then when it comes back to you for site plan approval, you already have your, your seeker done.
But, Mr. Primo, let me ask this question, just to clarify. The only way we can really do seeker is based on what we know today, whether it be a proposal, a concept plan, whatever. We're not doing a site plan review.
Well, in, in fact, as a lead agency, if, if you say the information that has been submitted to us is incomplete for us to make a seeker determination, you can in fact ask the applicant to submit additional information.
Let me ask a follow-up question to that if I may. Seeker, in my way of thinking is about mitigating specific, uh, environmental impacts that we might perceive, correct?
Well, yeah.
So for example, if we, if we, if we're talking about drainage and, just an example because Jay happened to bring that up today and I'm thinking about what Jay has said and, um, there's, we don't have a determination at this juncture as to how that could be mitigated concisely.
Well, I, I, I think as you go, if you were to complete the seeker process, you, you identify the potential impacts. You determine whether they may be significant or not. If you say there may be significant adverse environmental impacts, you, you identify those and then you say to the applicant, you have to prepare an environmental impact statement.
To prove how it's mitigated.
Right. Or you, or you say, your project as proposed, with the things you've put into your project, there's not a danger it will have a significant adverse impact and we can negdeck the project and call it.
But that's on, that's on today's code, not something that we might recommend.
Well, and, and this is where we've had the chicken and egg problem to some extent. I mean, what, there's, there's two things that have come up. One is that they, you're saying, you know, this R7 zoning ordinance apart from this project seems to, to have some changes being made. And then you also have a specific applicant, um, making an application to rezone a specific site. I mean, what I think we're envisioning here is that you would say to the town board, are you going to consider changes to the R7 zoning ordinance? And the town board is going to decide whether they're going to do that and they may, they'll have to follow a process to do that. And in fact, I think to some extent, they'll have to consider the fact that the change they're making applies throughout the town, not just to, to this site. At the same time, you could be asking the applicant, you know, I need to, I need more detail about drainage, I need more detail about how you're going to fit it onto the site. Um, gee, we have some concerns, I think has, has been expressed in the draft about the number of units. Why don't you start working and addressing those? You know, are those two paths going to come together in the future? We, we don't know at this point, but you know, that's, that's the thought. But I think the, the, the issue I want to make, make clear for the board though, is that you can't just say, I'm doing seeker on the concept of rezoning, I don't need to consider site-specific impact. You, you can't do that. And, and the town board couldn't do it either. I mean, if the town board was going to rezone this site and they were going to be the seeker lead agency, they would in essence have to get all the same seeker information you would to, to do your, your reviews. They'd in essence have to develop the record for you, for, for site plan approval. So, so, I mean, just to finish the concept, so I think the, the idea that we're working on here, um, or the town board's thought is, when it comes to certainly the specific site and site-specific issues, it's really the planning board that has the expertise for, for looking at those. And that's, that's why the idea was to have you guys be the lead agency.
In point of fact, we're going to be asking if you're under your scenario, we need to ask the app, in our, you know, to, we lay our concerns basically for a complete site plan application, which is not being required as part of the R7 application this time.
Right. Your requiring it at this point is part of the seeker process.
But then they could go up there and they're going to, then they're at risk for a huge amount of engineering for a parcel that may or may not be rezoned.
So the applicant could make a decision, let's wait and see what the town board does with our R7 zoning.
Well, why don't we segment, separate this, excuse me, I want to say-
Don't use that word.
Separate this and just send a recommendation to the town board to amend R7.
Based on what criteria though? I guess that's from-
Based on the fact that we can't, we're in a circular argument, that we don't have enough information, it's not recorded as part of the R7 application process, and that we need this, we have concerns about this, but we don't have that and we, you know, it is part-
There's no other application that we would get where we would have to do a secret determination without a site plan.
Right, devoid of a site plan.
And, and, and the fact that we have that situation right here makes it impossible for us to do due diligence on, to, to either the developer or the neighbors. And, and that's all there is to it. We can continue to, we can put it any way we want, but that's the bottom line. We just can't do our job right.
Well, the way it was sent to you by the town board put you in that position.
Right, right. Well, and, and let me just say one thing is, it, it could happen in other situations. You could, the, the town board might say, gee, this person wants to rezone this property to, um, industrial, we'd like to have you do the seeker review and give us a recommendation of that and it would be kind of perhaps the same issue, you know, but-
I'm talking about R7 and what we're, what this particular zoning type does is it says that it's an overlay over the whole town. So we have to look at, and there's not a whole lot of undeveloped space in the town of Aroniquoid. So the space that is still there is where you can find it. And it's, it's not necessarily flat, it's not necessarily without a stream going through it. There's other things that may or may not be great about the particular piece of parcels that are left. So in order for us to do a good seeker review on any of that, we need to see exactly what the applicant has in mind. And the only good way to do that is with a site plan review.
And engineering.
And so-
You know, fellas, let me ask you a question, Jay, and you and I actually have been thoughtful throughout the day, you know, and- throughout the day, you know, and, you know, talking about...
I'm thoughtful just about every day.
No doubt. Is, do we really need, as we look at it today, based on our current code, we know it doesn't work. It's, it's real simple. So if we have, if we do a concept review, or even if we had more information and so forth, and that's, Mr. Primo, I'm trying to get to, we're looking at it today, current code that's in place, and then we take in that to make recommendations to the town board as to what, as Jay said, an overlay over the whole town, what we think could be more amenable to an R seven proposal. Is that correct? But we have to look at it as it is today, because we don't have a new code.
Yeah, I, I, I think I understand your question, but let's, let's, I think when, when, when the town board sent this to you, and, and it's almost easier if you think of it as two separate questions. One is they said, here's this rezoning application, we wish to consider it, we need to report a recommendation, someone has to do seeker, go and do that on the legacy project. Then they also separately said, though it was at the same time, should we make any changes to the R seven zoning ordinance? You know, is there, is there something? I think what perhaps has, has perhaps changed, or perhaps wasn't anticipated, was the fact that, that the planning board, as I hear what you're saying, says, you know, R seven really needs to be changed. It's not just a tweak here or tweak there. It's just not decreasing parking spaces from sixty to fifty-five. It's, it's significant changes to the R seven ordinance itself that I think has become the, the new piece of this. So you, you seem to be, what I hear you saying is, we're ready to send that piece back to the, to the town board, but we're not ready to act on legacy.
Right. It sounds like that resolution, all of the wheres, those are largely historical recollections of what's occurred, and paragraphs one through seven involve the C corps. At this stage, then, it would seem that that is to be withheld, subject to the submission of more information. And paragraph eight forward is the rezone, or what we've called the textual material.
Text amendment, yeah.
Haven't heard any, any grand disagreement with regard to that, and incorporates the town...
Other than the item 9E, which I think needs to be modified.
I think 9E, yeah, your, your modification there, you've already stated that the site capacity worksheet, should it be accurate or not, is up to the town board for consider, further consideration.
Right. Yeah.
I second that.
Yeah, me too.
Whatever I say, I don't have an opinion.
Well...
You're going to withhold your C corps consideration?
Totally, I mean, it's almost, look, look, so it's really, you're, what you're talking about, Dan, is we really start paragraph eight.
After the whereas.
And do that, well, let me, let me, let me, I think we'd still like to do the, I'd still like to workshop that with the planning board, and, and maybe then we can put it up on the screen so people can see what we're, we're, we're working on. I think also, probably at the workshop, I'd like to talk a little bit about the, the whole rezoning seeker thing, if you, if you'd like.
I don't know that I, I mean, I'd almost like to rule on eight. We got to modify one clause in this thing and push the eight out of here. I mean, I mean, yeah, maybe Mr. Primo needs to revise the language, and then between the town staff and myself, we can put, I mean, eight in and of itself is intact, and the preamble is intact. I mean, do we want to consider, I mean, delaying this another month for something that we're pretty firm in our agreement on what we want to do?
Do we keep one or not?
Which one of you?
Well, you know, one thought is to keep one, then go to eight.
Keep one, yeah, and then move to eight.
Then move to eight, and then leave it that way.
Yes.
Along that approach, I, you know, I guess I'd want to hear from, from Bernie and Ray, because you were the two guys that were at the board, at the workshop, pretty insistent that you wanted paragraphs two, three, four, five included.
Well, I think that's part of the resolution for seeker if we do it in the future, but, I mean, I, I still, it seems almost like a futile effort to have a site plan that's not compliant with the current zoning to be reviewed for seeker and all these other things, and then we got to go back and modify. I mean, I don't know. It just seems like we're really getting the chicken before the egg. We got to, I think there was a lot of good information that came out about that R seven zoning that we really need to change. And one of the key things, I think it's significant, but a minor change, is that we need to include a site plan. I mean, it's significant in its absence, but it's minor in its change, because, I mean, it's a minor amount of sentence that needs to be added, because I don't see how we can do this without site plan and engineering.
Well, we certainly can't make a secret determination.
Right.
And without that, I don't know why, how the town board could go forward with a zoning change without it.
They could, they could not do a rezoning without seeker being...
Yeah, so if we can't do seeker without, if they can't do seeker without a zoning, they can't make a zoning change without seeker, and we can't do seeker.
We can't do seeker without a site plan, so...
Without a site plan. And so you get the little three dots, right? Therefore, we need a site plan.
Well, why don't we, I, I think as we're talking this through, what we're talking about doing is, is keeping all the wheres in the beginning, keeping in paragraph number one, deleting everything up to paragraph eight, making paragraph eight number two, and so forth. So eight would be two, nine would be three.
Nine E needs some change.
Nine, well, there's two, two changes I think we discussed. One was nine E, and whether we have a specific recommendation that a lot size of five acres is, is, we, not productive, or do we simply...
That's C already.
C is, is fine.
Yeah.
C addresses that, okay.
And, and do we want to just delete E, or do we want to say something?
I mean, I don't know. I think that the sentence should be something to the effect that site capacity worksheet may or may not contain an error, and further study needs to be made to determine that. And then, further consideration should be made as to whether the site capacity worksheet should be included as part of the R seven zoning, period.
I think you could say, I mean, the language I had was, the planning board through investigation, through the course of investigation, has found that there may or may not be an error on the site capacity worksheet, and this should be reviewed, and the town board should review whether the site capacity worksheet is appropriate for our seven zoning ordinance.
Well, those are two different things, though.
Yeah, those are two different things. Do you want to just say the second one?
Don't do a run-on sentence there.
Do you want to just do the second one?
Well, no, I, I think you should, I think we should say, two, that both things, I...
You know, I'm still unclear.
I, I don't even know where to get, yeah. Well, I, I get back to, maybe it should be, just that it should be included or excluded, and then there's a separate issue as to whether there's an error in it. You know what I'm saying?
What is it, I don't even...
It's degrees versus percent.
That's an error?
Well, yeah.
I mean, if you, if you read the document from Larry, I mean, we talked about that for...
It makes a big difference in the, in the calculation of what is and what isn't a steep slope.
Or, yeah, and so, I don't see that as an error. I mean, did we ever get anything from the conservation board on that? I'm just curious. Were they ever consulted on this?
We certainly got stuff from them.
Yeah, we got stuff from them.
Larry, do we have anything from the conservation board on this?
The simple answer is no. I put together this document over the weekend because the conservation board was asking me to elaborate on the difference between degrees, which relates to the trigonometric functions used in soil slope stability, and percent, which is another way of stating it, but it doesn't work with trig. And I have not received a response back, but as I indicated in my conclusions, I think the site capacity worksheet is, is a valuable tool. I think that if the definition of what is a steep slope was based on the 1985 document from Mono County, that document is, it should be looked at, and I have had discussions with geotechnical engineers and other town engineers who have wrestled with this issue to take a look at the categories of soils, and what is appropriate slopes and appropriate safety factors, and then to go back to our site capacity worksheet and dial in some steps between the fifty percent no build and the ninety-five percent no build, which might be at twenty-four degrees, you are sixty-five percent, and at twenty-seven, you are eighty-five, you know, eighty percent. So there are some interim steps based on the amount of slope. But back to the original question, I have not received a response from the conservation board yet, because they were just sent this this morning. But again, you know, it comes back with the language in here of looking at the site capacity worksheet, and a request was made to me to elaborate on geotechnical matters.
What do other towns do? Just curious.
Well, what other towns do, let's just take Henrietta. If you want to do a subdivision, you need to design standard, and it's R twenty zoning, so twenty thousand square foot lots, you need to design a conventional plan with one hundred by two hundred, twenty thousand square foot lots. So it's basically a geometric thing. You come up with this number, and you say, I can get twenty-three lots here, but this is really unimaginative and wastes a lot of space. I really want to design my lots eighty feet wide or eighty-five feet wide, and a hundred eighty-five or a hundred eighty feet deep, and then I'd like to have twenty-five percent green space. So the idea, you know, gets into cluster zoning, is first you have to do this geometric, which gives you a total lot number, then you design a creative plan. What I like about the site capacity worksheet is it is a mathematical analysis that takes into account slopes, woodlots, wetlands, stream corridors, other slopes, and you come up with a lot count, and I believe in the case of the legacy, you, you divide this, this net number by ninety-six hundred square feet, which is our, our one, our two lot size, and you get, I think, twenty houses. So you could, in theory, build twenty houses on this legacy site based on the site capacity worksheet.
That's not what I asked, though.
I, I think I answered your, did, have I had a response yet from the conservation board?
No, no, no. No. How do other towns do it on their site capacity worksheet?
They don't have one.
So they don't look at it in degrees or percentage?
Well, you're looking at basically the, you know, correspondence I've had is that they're defining these things in percent, okay? But the geotechnical calculations are actually done in degrees.
Just curious. And is that changing it? Is it a mistake, the way we have it now? Or is that just a difference of opinion as to how we should look at it?
Is changing it a mistake? I...
No, as it, as it is today, because we're saying that there's a potential mistake. That's, that's all I'm trying to get to. Is it a mistake, or is it just a difference of thought?
It is a, I guess my personal feeling is it should be looked at as to whether or not a twenty percent slope, which is a one-on-five slope, should be fifty percent, not buildable, and whether that is based in good engineering theory.
We, we keep saying, Larry, and I said, asked it at the workshop, and this is where I get a little bit frustrated, and I've asked it in emails, is it a mistake, or is it a difference of thought? It says that there's a mistake or an error in the calculation.
The, the original document done in May 1985 was a table that gave both angles in percent and degrees. And several pages later, a steep slope was defined as anything greater than fifteen percent. I was told by a long practicing engineer who was on that committee, that during the preliminary development of that document, that fifteen was not percent, it was degrees, which corresponded with the table. So when the final document came out, and it had been changed from the symbol degrees to the symbol percent, there was a conflict that was obvious to engineers that the definition of steep slope in the written word did not jive with the table. I don't know whether that information was used to develop the site capacity worksheet. I only question when the site capacity worksheet says that a twenty percent slope or one-on-five slope is fifty percent no build, whether that document carried over into the site capacity worksheet. That's all.
So there really is no error.
We said, but we said that there may be an error in it, and we should look at it. That's what we said in this...
Let's take out the word error, there may be a need for modification.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm trying to get to. I've asked, is there or isn't there an error? What is the error? That's, that's what I've been trying to get to all along.
And we don't know if there's an error.
That's what I'm saying.
So that's why we said it may be an error.
Take it out.
And if you... Well, all right. In, in closing, we define, we say for slopes greater than thirty percent, it's ninety-five percent no build. However, we, and every other town allows one vertical to three horizontal grading, one-on-three slope, which is actually thirty-three point three percent, or eighteen point four degrees. So we don't let you build on ninety-five percent of a slope that's slightly less than one-on-three, but when you're building your site, you can design one-on-three, which is a mobile slope and inherently stable, to your heart's content. And you can design to a one-on-four, which is a little more gradual, which is twenty-five percent, but we would classify that as fifty percent no build. So how on one hand can you say, this site is unstable and you can't build on it, but when you do build on it, you can build something that's actually steeper than what we're calling a steep slope? So that's kind of the conflict.
Again, Larry, I'm not saying that there shouldn't be, it shouldn't be addressed or looked at. I've been asking for several weeks, this is the last workshop, and I put it in emails, what is the error?
But it's spelled out in the letter that you got right here, it's the first two paragraphs, what the error is.
Well, is it, again...
Let, let's not...
I just want to reword that.
We're changing that language anyway, so we're, the error issue is, is gone.
Yes. Here's, maybe just to do this, I, I hope this is it. The planning board, through the course of its investigation, believes there may be an error on the worksheet.
No.
Nope?
May require modi, the worksheet may require modification. Better address current engineering standards.
How about we do this? Just put in a, just put in one sentence that says, the town board should review...
I think you should put in exactly what Peter said.
Okay, Jeb, say it again. The planning board, through the course of its investigation...
No.
Peter, he might sort of...
Yeah, I know, I've lost it.
Say it again. The planning board, through the course of its investigation, has determined that the site capacity worksheet may require modification to meet current engineering standards.
To properly reflect current engineering standards.
Yeah.
We could get it really good if we stayed here all night.
Alternately, I think that, do we want to say, alternatively, the town board should consider eliminating the site capacity worksheet from the R seven zone?
I don't know about that. That's, that's implicit in what you've said to them, if they look at it and think, if it needs it, go do it.
Yep.
So Rich, did you want me to answer your question?
Sure.
The reason I didn't like the first version was because it may have said we couldn't do the seeker, but then it went on to talk about the density issue.
Right.
And that's why I felt it fell short, because it only talked about the density and not the other things.
I see.
So that's why I didn't like that first version. Ray, I'll let you speak, too.
That's what I was, I think we were in agreement that night, Bernie. There were other issues, not just density.
Right.
And we should be more specific.
So I'm fully okay with where we're heading. Okay.
Peter, if I could just go through the wording again, I'm sorry, because I don't, I can't quiet. I can't quiet. "The planning board through the course of its investigation believes the site capacity worksheet may need modification to conform with engineering standards."
Current.
To conform with-
What was the word you said? Not conform, uh?
Reflect.
Reflect.
To reflect current engineering standards?
Yeah.
Thank you.
To more accurately reflect. Is that a, you call that a dangly part, not a dangly?
Reflect current. One more time. "The planning board through the course of its investigation believes the site capacity worksheet may need modification to more accurately reflect current engineering standards."
Yes.
Yes. Okay, good. Al, become-
Who knew we needed a-
What used to be nine E, which will now be three, I believe.
Three E.
The only thing we didn't talk about was paragraph 10. Did we keep that last sentence or not? The old paragraph 10.
I mean-
Last two sentences seem-
The concern I have with the last sentence of paragraph 10 is that it's up for debate.
Well, I don't, I think the last sentence should be eliminated because it seems part and parcel to what we have to do as an ordinary course of every application that becomes a progress. You know what I'm saying? It's like, it's stating the obvious. We're not, that's what we do with every application. And, I mean, the legacy project remains subject to a seeker review by the planning board is-
I'll take out the last sentence.
Yeah. And then now I don't know if we don't, I mean, you could say expeditiously again.
I like to say deliberately and thoroughly, but that's just me.
Yeah. I don't think we need expeditiously, but I think that that's, I would love that in behalf of the applicant.
So just, just to go through the changes, all the whereas is stay. Paragraph one stays as written.
Yep.
Paragraph two through seven are eliminated in their totality.
Yep.
Paragraph eight becomes paragraph two. Paragraph nine becomes paragraph three. We will make the change to E that we've read before. The next paragraphs continue. H and I as they are. Paragraph 10 will become new paragraph-
Be done in four.
Four. The last sentence will be eliminated, and paragraph 11 will become paragraph five.
Correct.
We can't vote on it. You don't want to vote on this tonight?
What?
You don't want to vote on this tonight?
Yes, I want to vote on this tonight. Does everyone agree?
I agree.
I was just saying to Ray that I'm, you know, back to my original point. I think, I think we have the body in front of us. We know exactly what it's going to say. I think it's important for everyone in this room to get to some finality with this so it can get back to the town board, they can do what they need to do. I don't think there's a need to go through a dog and pony show of putting it up on a, on a screen.
I think we've got it. I mean, we've just made some minor tweaks here. We've significantly eliminated, I think, the things that we need, that we're-
And I mean no disrespect, Mike, by your idea, but I think we worked through it well enough that I think we all know what it should say.
No, I think after all the discussion we've had now, I, I'm in agreement.
Do we feel confident that we can make a motion on the resolution as amended?
Well, do you, would, I'm just wondering, should we read through the entire thing aloud just to, so that people understand what we're voting for?
Well, it would hurt. Let's do it.
Sure. Just, sorry.
Storytime with Ed Primo.
I don't, is Ed going to read it? I thought you were going to-
You can get a copy of this because you're going through all this and, you know, you got it in front of you.
We'll read it.
We're going to read the whole.
Even if you're reading it, the concept, I'm sure.
Well, yeah, certainly once, once it's put in the final form and filed and everything, it will be a public record that will be available to everybody. We can, I can certainly read it if you want, as, as I understand it to be. It'll take me a few minutes, but-
I would, I would suggest reading it, and then it will be the discretion of the board, how they wish to act on that final product.
Okay. Resolution number 2012-PB112-1. The Town of Arondacoit Planning Board. Upon the request by the Town Board of the Town of Arondacoit per resolution number 211-59 for the Planning Board as lead agency to determine if the proposed senior living project 1788 Titus Avenue and 105 Willow Creek may have any significantly adverse impacts on the environment, and to consider any appropriate amendments to be made to Article 23, Section 235-114 to 235-150 of the Town of Arondacoit zoning ordinance. At a regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Arondacoit, Monroe County, New York, held at the Town Hall, 1280 Titus Avenue in said Town of Arondacoit, on the 28th day of January 2013 at 7:00 PM local time, there was, and I, it has all the members listed, and my, and Dan and Larry, Planning Board member blank offered the following resolution and moved its adoption. Whereas Legacy at Pine View Park, LLC, open paren defined legacy or applicant, submitted an application to the Town Board of the Town of Arondacoit on or about December 20, comma, 2010, requesting a rezoning of property at 1788 Titus Avenue, gives a tax ID number, and 105 Willow Creek Lane, once again, gives a tax ID number. In the Town of Arondacoit, from its current zoning of R-1 residential to R-7 residential, allow a multifamily independent living facility for seniors containing 101 units and related site improvements to be known as Legacy at Titus Avenue, the project. And whereas the proposed rezoning would be one of a number of approvals necessary to allow development and operation of a site for a multifamily independent living facility for seniors of approximately 100 units. And whereas the Town Board reviewed the full environmental assessment form that was submitted by the applicant with respect to the project. And whereas, on or about March 15, comma, 2011, the Town Board held a public hearing on the proposed rezoning application. And whereas, by resolution number 201-59 adopted in June 21, comma, 2011, the Town Board requested, A, that the Planning Board of the Town of Arondacoit act as lead agency for the review under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and its implementing regulations, six NYCRR, Part 617, and B, that the Planning Board coordinate its review with all other involved agencies, and C, that the Planning Board follow the seeker, following the seeker review, issue a report and recommendation on the proposed rezoning, and refer this matter back to the Town Board for consideration, and D, that the Town Board consider whether there are any appropriate amendments-
Planning Board.
Excuse me. That the Planning Board consider whether there are any appropriate amendments that should be made to the Town of Arondacoit zoning ordinance to address the development of senior housing in the Town of Arondacoit, semicolon, and whereas the Planning Board has circulated a notice to all involved agencies proposing to act as lead agency under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act seeker, and no agencies have objected to the proposed lead agency designation. And whereas, in response to requests from the Town Department of Community Development and Building Services, the applicant has provided additional information, excuse me, additional material dated August 6, comma, 2011, supplementing the full environmental assessment form submitted with the rezoning application. And whereas, on September 13, comma, 2011, several members of the Planning Board conducted an inspection tour of the property to be rezoned, semicolon, that said inspection was publicly advertised, semicolon, that members of the public were present at the inspection tour, semicolon, and that other members of the Planning Board have inspected the property at other times. And whereas, on December 19, 2011, the Planning Board held a public hearing with respect to the request contained in Town Board Resolution Number 2011-59. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Planning Board of the Town of Arondacoit as follows.
You lawyer types really like those whereas's, don't you?
Oh, gosh. One, the Planning Board finds that it does not have sufficient information on the project to make a determination of environmental significance pursuant to seeker. The Planning Board believes the necessary information would be typically supplied as part of a preliminary site plan review by the Planning Board, and that the applicant should provide similar information that included an application for a preliminary site plan review. Two, at the request of the Town Board, the Planning Board has examined the lot and bulk requirements, Section 235-148, and parking requirements, Section 235-149, applicable in the R7 residential zone, and has received comments from the applicant and the public with respect to these requirements. In addition, the Planning Board has reviewed a report from La Bella Associates in the R-7 residential code and recommended revisions dated October 8, 2012. A copy of the La Bella report is attached. Three, the Planning Board makes the following findings and recommendations, colon. A, any application for rezoning to R7 should be accompanied by a complete application for site plan review by the Planning Board. B, before the Town Board makes a decision on rezoning any town parcel to R7, the Planning Board will conduct and report on its preliminary site plan review, subject to the Town Board's rezoning decision. C, the minimum net buildable area requirement should be decreased or eliminated from the code. D, greater flexibility regarding parking requirements should be built into the R7 code. E, the Planning Board through the course of its investigation believes the site capacity worksheet may need modification to more accurately reflect current engineering standards. F, the lot and bulk requirements of Section 235-148 and the parking regulations of 235-149 of the Town and Arondacoit zoning ordinance inhibit the ability to develop property in the Town of Arondacoit for senior citizen living facilities. G, by inhibiting the ability to develop property in the Town of Arondacoit for senior living facilities, the lot and bulk requirements of Section 235-48 and the parking regulations of 235-149 are inconsistent with the stated purpose of Section 235-144, the zoning ordinance, which include, this is indented quote italicized, A, encourage and where appropriate, provide for independent as well as assisted living communities and community care facilities as a housing option so that the elderly have the opportunity and ability to remain residents of the Town of Arondacoit as their housing needs change, as recommended in the Town's master plan and community development block grant, CDBG program. B, once again, indented italicized, allow flexibility in the provision of housing with a continuum of levels of care to satisfy the economic, social, psychological, social, and healthcare needs of the elderly. That's the end of the indented quote. Paragraph H.
Do we need to take one of those socials out of there?
Uh, we, I, I could proofread that. I see there are two socials. I don't know if it's-
Yeah.
We'll, we'll make it subject to proofreading that.
All right.
There is H, there is no rational relationship between the requirements of Section, Section 235-148 and 235-149 and the standards set forth in Section 235-144C, which provides that the purpose and intent of the R, R-7 district includes, once again, indented italicized, protect to the maximum practical extent the aesthetic character of the Town of Arondacoit, the property values of the community, and the general health, safety, and welfare of the public by ensuring that the location, nature, design, and intensity of said housing will, one, be in harmony with the surrounding land uses with respect to building height, mass, density, and architectural context; two, not adversely affect the orderly pattern of development in areas where it is located; three, not alter the essential character of the surrounding neighborhood; four, create a hazard to the public health, safety, or welfare; five, not be detrimental to free and safe flow of traffic. End of indented italicized text. Back to I. Each of the objectives enumerated in Section 235-144C can be achieved by permitting development in accordance with revised lot and bulk requirements and parking regulations. Notwithstanding revised lot and bulk requirements and regulations, each proposed development should be considered on a case-by-case basis as part of site plan review to ensure that the objectives contained in 235-144C are achieved. Paragraph four, the Planning Board requests that the Town Board act to amend the R7 zoning ordinance. The Planning Board makes this request independent of its review of the legacy project. While the issues raised above rose from a review of the legacy project, the Planning Board believes that the Town Board should amend the R7 zoning whether or not the legacy project proceeds. The Planning Board notes, however, that an amended R7 zoning ordinance would assist the Planning Board in its review of the legacy project and other projects and promote the purposes of the R7 district. The legacy project remains subject to seeker review by the Planning Board, period. Five, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. The last page is to record the vote.
I do think we need to change one sentence on that paragraph.
Which paragraph?
It says, paragraph four. It says, while the issues raised above, we've taken all of those out. Correct?
Um, I think you're, I, I think the issues we're talking about relate to the R7 zoning.
Oh, okay. Is that what it's for? As long as it's not the other issues, I'm okay with it.
Yes.
Thank you, Ed. Excellent job.
We have a new appreciation of court reporters' read backs.
Is everyone in agreement that we can make a motion?
Yep. Yes.
I'll move the, I'll move the, I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Was it Bernie?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Seeing none?
I'm opposed.
What?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed? Oh, all right. Thank you. Hold on. Locky.
Second.
He seconded.
All right, good work, everyone. Do we have a motion? There's no other matters before us. And I was corrected that the application for Mark McGrath was, what was it? I said something that's-
Withdrawn, not tabled.
Postponed.
Postponed.
Is the correct term.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Nice job, Peter.
Thank you. Thank you for your-
Good input. Good input. Everybody.